...will be recorded.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners. Lander County Courthouse Commissors Chamber, 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada. Also via teleconference at Austin Courthouse Commission Office, 122 Main Street, Austin, Nevada. Via audio conferencing by go-to-meeting, barring technical difficulties. Call-in details, one eight six six eight nine nine four six seven nine. Access code four eight four nine two seven seven five three five seven three. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathy, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Okay, complete the swearing-in of the 2023 elected officials of Lander County Commission. So, I want to welcome you all up to the swearing-in. It's an honor to be sworn in. The swearing-in is actually ancient ceremony. And it has the religious underpinnings, the ancient sort of ceremony. The honor is not. You get to raise your right hand, that's note to God, that you intend to do your best in your office. I say it's meant to the taxpayers that elected them pretty much. So, it's an honor to be here with you. I'm going to ask each of you introduce yourself and what your position is, and if you have any family members here to introduce.
Ryan Sparks, Lander County Commissioner. My wife is Lori Sparks. James Paul, Land and County School Board.
Lauren Paul, Lander County Assessor, starting my seventh term.
Seventh term.
Alexa Brightle, Lander County Recorder, and I have my mother-in-law, my husband, and my two kids.
Sandra Jorgensen, Lander County School Board.
Ron Harper, Lander County Sheriff.
Courtney Rule, Chief of Police.
Paul Smara, I'll be on the Lander County Conservation District. I'm really wider than this course, Lander County Conservation District.
My child, Lander County Commissioner. My wife, Kelly, my daughter, Jen, and my son, Holden.
Do you guys have one more person? Mr. Horwood.
How you doing?
Okay, what's your position?
Tony Wood, Lander County School Board.
All right. Do you have anything to say?
Very happy.
Huh?
Oh, no. Glad you had me happy.
You shouldn't have. All right. So, what we're going to do is you're going to raise your right hand, and then you're going to repeat after me, and I will tell you to insert certain words and certain things.
Cover behind you.
So, I.
You're good.
Take your name.
Right.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
Or.
Or a firm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the Constitution and government.
And of the Constitution and government.
Of the state and the.
Of the state and the.
And its all in use.
And its all in use.
Where the domestic reform.
Where the domestic reform.
And that will be a true face.
And a fair truth.
Allegiance and loyalty.
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same.
To the same.
In the ordinance.
In the ordinance.
Revolution.
Revolution.
Or law.
Or law.
Of any state not understanding.
Of any state not understanding.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
And please do your state of office.
Lander County School Board.
I'm going to watch him about the end.
We'll talk about the end.
For Rob Goff.
So.
Or he will pay the penalty for perjury.
He's going to lose his perjury.
Uh, do you have any? All right. Your first?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, she is. Thank you. This is Angela? All right. Thank you. I will be by later, put your hats up.
Conservation District, Conservation District.
So, I'm going to accept you to bring you home. Well.
Who did that? Our dance portion of the conversation.
Well, I was trying to see how to pronounce the last name. Because I was going to be like, okay.
How do you pronounce that one?
No, you got it right. Way different.
Congratulations. For the. Actually, this. Right. You can go ahead and. Go ahead and. Thank you. Public comment for non-agendaized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting. If any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board, all public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, and in the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner. Be public comment based on viewpoint, may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Come on up.
Okay, my name's Lenny Shepherd, and.
Hit the little button in the center of that.
My name's Lenny Shepherd, and I live out at Hilltop. I've lived here for sixty years. And first thing, congratulations to everybody as a public official new ones. And anyway, I'm not satisfied with the road that they put in out there. The other day, the other night, the one that goes from Martin Ranch Road to Hilltop, water was coming down the ditch from Reece River and running onto Hilltop Road. So, I went and investigated it. And I have some pictures of it the next day, if everybody wants to see them. And it's a mess. For $2 million, somebody's head ought to roll over this deal. You're going to have a lake out in the middle of the flat, just like you have right at the, at the Mule Shoe Road. Okay. That is one ditch full of water right there. Now, you can go to the next one. There's both ditches full of water looking towards the BM from Hilltop Road. The water's diverted, it's running through one culvert full, the other, or the bridge, and there's another bridge that's sitting there dry. Somebody didn't clean the ditches for the water to run. I mean, maybe that wasn't on the contract, but that's going to be a mess from now till, I don't know when. Okay, next one. There's a ditch on the other side. I think that was the first one. Okay, there's the, here's a drain going into a bridge right there. That water's supposed to drain on the downhill side, and that's plugged, so the water can't even run to the downhill side. Where you see that berm? Okay, next one. Oh, that's a cone. No, actu- actually, that is the bridge. I'm sitting on the bridge, and there's no water running through it. Zero. Right there's the edge of the bridge. Okay, next one. That's the uphill side. There's the downhill side of it. Okay. There is the one that's running water. And it's backed up. Okay, one more. There's a good view of it sitting on the bridge. Next one. There's where the, the riprap wasn't even put, where the gravel goes down on the, on the bridge, it's almost to the pavement. It's sloughing off right there. That's with one storm. Okay, next one. Same thing. That's on the other side. Pardon?
The next one's the video.
Okay. Is my granddaughter in it?
I didn't watch it.
Okay, this is, here's the water just going down the road. There's three, four-foot ditches right there. They cut the ditches down so deep, the, the, the borrowed ditch is deeper than the riverbed. All right. I said my piece. Somebody needs to fix it. And there's a culvert out on Mule Shoe that's been plugged for two years, and they wonder why the water backs up. You need to put the culvert back in. You can't plug a culvert and walk off and leave it. Anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Come on up, Paul.
For the record, I just wanted to state that two weeks ago, the lands bill passed, and so we were able to get the ground out in Buffalo Valley, so I appreciate that. And then the, the money from one of the omnibus bills passed, and we'll be getting the money to help us renovate Lamira's building. So, just to let you guys know, sometime this month, they're going to come and do the environmental studies on the building and the adjacent parking lot, and then we'll start after we figure out if there's any remediation that we have to do. So, I just thought I'd let you know, and I'm looking forward to everything that could possibly happen out of Buffalo Valley. So, thank you guys so much for your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. All matters listed.
Oh, I'm back.
Sorry.
The water's running east to west now. Instead of south to north. They're going to have it where it's going to run to Hilltop and down Martin Ranch Road if that isn't fixed. So, I don't know.
Thank you.
You guys figured it out? Any more public comment? Okay, back to consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request an item to be taken from the consent agenda discussion, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Okay, number one, approval of January 3rd, 2023 Special Agenda Notice. Two, approval of November 16th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of December 8th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. And number four, approval of December 22nd, 2022 Meeting Minutes.
I didn't receive any meeting minutes, did you? Okay, with that, then, it's just number one, and I make a motion that we approve that.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and carried. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number one.
Mike, could you speak? You can push your button there, and it'll slow the mic to record you when you speak.
I abstained, just I wasn't here. From the bar.
Okay, number, item number one, Commissioners for possible action to elect Chairman and Vice Chairman to the Lander County Board of Commissioners for 2023 calendar year. I propose Brian as the new. Leader.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Brian, you're the new leader.
All right.
Here you go. Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we make JR, our Vice Chairman, again.
All seconded. I don't care. Okay, motion's been made and carried for Vice Chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, Commissioners for possible action to appoint Lander County Commissioners to the following various 2023 Advisory Boards.
You want me to take over for you, JR?
What's that?
You want me to take over for you?
Okay.
So, number two, Commissioners for possible action to appoint Lander County Commissioners to the following various 2023 Advisory Boards. We have A, Category One. You want me to read them all in, Bill, or do we just want to do one at a time?
You can do it either way.
Okay. All right, so we'll just take number one first. Lander County Board of Equalization. I'm currently the Commissioner that sits on that board, and I'll continue that. If everybody's okay with that. So then, do we want to take each one as its own? Do we need to have motions on these?
You could do it all at once, but considering if there's any composition, it could be problems, it might be best to just go down the list.
Okay, so what are we having at one? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And that motion was for Lander County Board of Equalization for me to sit on that board?
Right.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I do. I think we should just take, let's just do the appointments for each category and then do a motion.
And then go back and like, Category A, make the motion to approve what we discussed?
Yes, yes. Let's do that. So, Lander County Commissioners.
Okay, so, number two, Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority?
I will stay on that.
And I'll stay on it as an alternate? Number three.
You stay on as alternate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lander County Debt Management Commission. I currently sit on that, and I'll continue to sit on it. And I don't think we have any alternates for that one. Number four, Lander County Planning Commission.
I didn't think we had anybody sitting on the.
No, we don't. So, no Commissioner appointed to that board, right?
It's a liaison only.
What's that?
It's just a liaison.
Okay. Number five, Lander County Regional Transportation Committee. JR, you currently sit on that board, and I'm an alternate?
Yeah.
Do you want to continue to sit on that?
I'll stay on it.
Okay, I'll stay on it as an alternate. So, then, can I have a motion for A?
I'll make a motion, we approve those that have accepted that position for Category A and One.
A, Category One, okay? Do I have a second?
That's that, Ken.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we go to B, Category Two, Lander County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife. So, we don't have a Commissioner designated to this board, but back January 13th of 2022, we had nominated Commissioner Thomas to attend those meetings and report back to the Commission.
I, yeah, we should still do that.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Yeah. All right, great.
I'll make a motion, we approve number B, Category Two, for JR.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. So, none abstained, or none, no against. All right, so we have C, Category Three. One, Austin Airport Advisory Board.
I will stay on that, it's certainly easier since I'm in the South.
Okay. And. All right. So, number two, Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board.
We really don't have that board anymore. Well, I was on it, and they quit having meetings. Everybody quit.
Do you have members for it for them right now?
But I think that we still should. So, we have to designate who's the Commissioner. So, JR, you sat on that as a voting Commissioner. Do you want to still keep that?
Stayed.
Okay. And I, I was on it as an alternate, and I'll stay there as an alternate. Three, Local Emergency Planning Commission.
I'll stay on that.
Okay, and then Mr. Clark was the alternate. Do we have anybody else that wants to be an alternate on that? Mike, want to do that? So, Mike said he'd be an alternate. Number four, Lander County Economic Development Authority.
I sit on that already.
Is there an alternate, Kathy, on that one?
I think.
Yeah, I was the alternate.
Alternate, okay. Number five, Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission.
I'm on that. Art was on it, and I was the backup. I'll take the main position on there.
You want to take the main position?
Yeah.
And then who wants to be alternate?
I'll go with that.
Want to do that? Okay, Michael B., alternate. So, do we have a motion for C, Category Three?
I'll make a motion that we pass what we've talked about on the Category Two.
That'd be Category Three?
Or Category Three.
And that's items one. And that's items one through five?
One, two, five.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
A, any against? Okay, so D, category four, uh, one, Lander County Conservation District? Um, so we had, Amy was our appointed by the board to sit on that, but she was, um, elected. So I'll go back as serving as the commissioner on that board until we find a person that we can appoint or that wants to sit on it as our appointment. And then JR, you were our alternate, you wanna continue to be the alternate?
I'll stay there.
Okay? Uh, we have number two, Lander County Hospital District. And.
I think, um, Mike, you said you were okay with the, um, the hospital district?
Yes, yes.
And I'd like to take alternate.
Okay. Sorry. Number three, Lander County Safety Committee? We had Art Clark sit on that? Who wants to sit on it?
What is it?
Uh, the Safety Committee?
I don't want that one.
What's that?
I, that, that's one by himself, right?
Yeah. Anybody want that? You want that, Mike?
Is there like guidance to it or?
Yeah, you'll, I mean, you'll have instruction and guidance, yeah, for sure. Wanna sit on it? Okay, so Michael sit on that. Uh, four, Lander County, or four, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority? We had JR and Pat T on that?
Right, I'm okay with that.
Wanna say, you guys are good with that, okay?
Yep.
Number five, Department of Energy Board of Representatives? Pat T sat on it and I was an alternate, I'm fine with it, stay as an alternate, okay? Um, number six, Humboldt River Basin Water Authority?
I was on that, I'll stay there.
And Kathy, oh, Kathy was on it as well. Were you good with that?
I'm all right with that alternate.
Okay, and then we, so the alternate, that's, uh, that's just a vacancy, okay? So six. Number seven, State Land Use Planning Advisory Committee? We had, uh, Art Clark sit on that board? Who wants it?
I'd rather have somebody with experience.
You want that, JR?
I'll take it.
Okay, so JR will take that one. Uh, number eight, Nevada Works? We had Art as the primary and Kathy was our alternate?
They usually meet during the day though, don't they?
Yeah.
I think so, JR, can you take that one?
What is it?
Nevada Works, they don't meet all that often, but.
Formally joined.
Oh.
Yes, no?
Yeah, I guess I'll do it.
Okay, so we'll have JR as the primary and Kathy, wanna stay as the alternate?
Sure.
Okay? And then number nine is Pool Pat and we had, uh, Art sit on that and, uh, I'll take that if nobody wants it.
Okay, the, the problem with that is they were, they were having their main meeting the same times we were, so we haven't been able to.
Right.
Have the representation, so.
Maybe going further, maybe we can get them in.
Okay, thank you.
So are we good with that?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve category D, number four, with the names that have been submitted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any against? None. All right, so, number three, Correspondence Reports, Future Agenda Items? Make sure your C and E reports are in. Uh, reporting to the, to the state. I think they're due or were.
The fifty.
Any future agenda items for anybody? No?
I don't have anything.
All right. We'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments or on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have public comment?
I do.
Donnie?
Don Prince, Public Works, this new road, it's still under construction. Everything that's happening right now, it should be fixed by time that's open to public. It is not even open to public nowadays. So they still got final blading to do, where it's washing off off the sides, they've dug that out to put head walls in, they're gonna pour concrete. So, we, um, that's all I can say about that road, it's still under construction, so they gotta excuse our miss. That road that he's talking about, Mule Shoe Culverts, we got the culvert sorted, we've had them in, we just haven't had a chance to get them in. We monitor it during storms, if we need to open them old culverts up, we will to save the road, so.
All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you for that.
Once we ever get the time to get them culverts in, we're gonna change it out.
And please keep us updated as the progress goes on that road.
I will, I will, and I'll get with Aaron and make sure there's, everything's sloped in the right direction and all that, so.
All right.
Thank you.
And I'm sure the past commissioners, just to add to that, that you guys remember on Mule Shoe, one of the reasons we didn't start that construction was because of the.
Levy.
Yep, the flood levy and the effect it would have on that, so, um, we'll probably have to convene engineers and come back before you guys, before we go dig across Mule Shoe. It seems as simple as putting a culvert in, but I think there's a few more facets to go to that.
All right, uh, do we have any more public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion.
Oh. You have a motion to JR?
A second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
muted.